All right, after just a few technical difficulties, we're back. 6:03 PM start time. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to everybody who's with us this evening in the boardroom. Everybody who is viewing or listening via Zoom or phone. Welcome to the Board of Public Utilities. So as per usual, we do have a public comment section. On the agenda, we would ask that community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name and address and have five minutes to speak. If you are using the Zoom link and you wish to address the board, we would ask that you use the raise hand feature on the bottom of the screen. And we ask those who are attended via phone only to press star nine and indicate you wish to address the board in the public comment section. I would remind everybody that comments are limited to five minutes and they should be directed to the board itself and no one else. This is a public meeting, as you all know. And so we would caution anyone who is addressing the board not to disclose confidential account information or disclose account information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not be able to provide individual account information or history during an open meeting for the same reasons. As always, the board may email or call a BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website using Zoom. They'll appear on your screen. I would like to remind everyone to please silence your phones for this evening. Don't forget that. My name is Rose Mulvaney Henry, Member at Large, Position Three, and I'm currently the Board President. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, General Manager David Haley, Member at Large, Position Two, Tom Groneman, Second District and Board Vice President, Bob Mylan, First District and Board Secretary, Jeff Bryant, Third District, Mary Gonzalez, Member at Large, Position One, and Angela Lawson, our Deputy Chief Counsel. One last thing, remind everybody that microphones in the room are extremely sensitive and they can pick up and record comments from anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Angela, will you call roll for me, please?
Roll call Groneman.
President.
Haley.
President.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda, I will ask if there are any comments, suggestions, edits, et cetera.
Move to approve.
I second.
Approval of tonight's agenda has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of April 19, 2023, I will again ask if there are any edits, comments, suggestions, et cetera.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of April 19, 2023 has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Thank you. Um. Think we're good. Mr. Johnson, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Do have one person signed up to speak today, Ty Gorman. If you can come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
Thank you. I'm Ty Gorman, 2843 Parkwood Boulevard, 66104 KCK. Appreciated the attention of the board, the subgroup on the customer outreach and advocacy group today from at five. And just wanted to kind of re-present a couple of ideas that I think presented in the past. Encourage the board to think about this more like the business advocates that already exist in so many utilities, including here where there's paid staff from the great pairs here to take care of the concerns of the large commercial customers and there's representatives on the commercial customer's side who are also paid to bring the very specific issues that they have and requests and demands that their investors have to paid staff in the utility. And that creates a process of solution building. I think this is a very, this can be a very similar process, except not just for the rich and not behind closed doors. The way to collect information from the community, I don't think, is to have 10 individuals that have signed up to be kind of free labor, trying to coalesce all of that information. Also, it just in a meeting every few months to you guys, that seems really impossible to to get at everything in that format. It just seems like there needs to be a application process that goes further into the community. I would recommend through the NBRs that people can be compensated for helping attempt to bring their issues and improve the utility's response to their customer issues through when they have non-bill payment or shut-off issues and they're going for help from the United Way adjacent to organizations that you guys fund. The other one would be people involved in the energy efficiency programs. Those folks should have applications and an ability to have their issues transparently taken in by an application put on a website addressed by this subgroup of staff and community leaders who are maybe already advocates in this space or already volunteering in this space that have this transparent way to see what everyone's dealing with that wants to come forward with a utility issue. So, yeah, I just think you can have standards around the application so that it's correctly filled out and make sure, try to get outreach to all areas of the county. Try to narrow it by people who are doing screening for the low income issues that they're having, trying to bring those details in across the county is what I'm getting at. And, yeah, I think the, when thinking about the funding of it, it's more the, through the NBRs and directly through the utilities, having staff able to address these issues ongoing, having community leaders who through the various UG or grant processes able to continually involve themselves in this behind-the-scenes education and meetings and coalescing of the material. So it's not just for you guys every three months in a meeting. And, you know, that can compare that to these quarterly meetings, thinking about co-benefits to the marketing budget, co-benefits to the energy efficiency implementation to the customer service, you know, implementation of programs there. There's a lot of benefit adds to having the staff and having this, these folks who are involved through the residential side being paid to help improve BPU processes and help it bring.
You have one minute.
So just the, you know, the, the, the small outlay of 10 grand is pretty, pretty small, I think, to, to help through those types of avenues pay for folks' participation in this process. I mean, you can compare that to those other larger programs as well as the tens of millions of dollars spent on the nearman coal plant, which does not benefit customers and costs a ton of money to the, to our community while poisoning the air and the water in our community. And compared to the, the Inflation Reduction Act, opportunities that also require this public input and coalition building, especially around environmental justice grants that are provided to the federal government over the next couple of years. So we would just encourage this wider process.
That is time.
Behind the scenes, it brings more opportunities to the utility. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Mr. Gorman. I've got a question for you. So were you able to hear our entire conversation tonight?
The majority of it.
Okay. And so you did hear us talk about the funding, right? And you did hear us struggle with how that would be administered. And so I guess my question to you is, since you're the one who has now brought this to two committee members, is you said go through the NBRs, like, so we would, we would issue grants to the NBRs? And then the NBRs would be responsible for, because if you heard the whole discussion, you heard, you know, the attorneys caution, right, and understandably so, of not wanting to people, not wanting to, you know, get people out of certain income ranges for other reasons, right? So if they're taking disability or something like that, not to put them in a precarious position, right? So, so I'm just curious as to your, your thoughts on that.
Well, the, as far as getting above a certain income level where taxation issues come into account, I assume that's where the lawyers were coming into. So there's a threshold there that you can stay below for these application processes, I believe, at $600. And so if the NBRs are giving us an extra amount of money to create these application-based stipends for folks that are below that threshold, I think that's a good way to get participation and you can have that, those, those parameters on it for correctly filling out the application, having locational representation. And so I think that's not the way to fund the folks who are like organizing all the information on the backend, which I think would be somewhat more, there should be some staff representation here. As long as it's transparent, the staff should be in conversation with the community, helping this peer learning process. And then the other community leaders, I think, will be maybe paid through other sources. I think those are, those can vary and don't necessarily have to be chosen by the BPU board. But the funding level that I'm thinking of through the board would be for those folks through the NBRs who would be able to participate through applications and.
Okay. And when you say participate through applications, so your, your thought is that folks would actually put in an application to the NBR for further participation as community ambassadors with the committee? And I'm sorry, I'm just not following.
No, yeah, I mean, I think that that low level of participation I'm thinking of would be you've, you're, you're clearly involved with the utility in some way. Either you can't pay or there's other issues with your house, with your connection, with fees that have been levied against you with energy efficiency programs. So the application would just be detailing out those issues, talking it through with the people who can put it in that kind of transparent format on a decision-making platform, say a website or something like that. And so just that process of telling their story, being the expert of their own experience, bringing that into a space where can be discussed with staff through this, the the interstitial meetings between the quarterly meetings that the board has. And then at those quarterly meetings, the board will already have all the information needed to, from those base, those base building and grassroots level concerns to where they can, instead of having, you know, just having to deal with discussing that, those issues in that moment, like, like the board trying to problem solve quarterly and come to conclusions. That process through these applications that were paid could be done ahead of time.
Okay.
That makes sense.
It, no, it, it does make sense what you're saying. I mean, I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying. We can talk offline about that.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Because I, I mean, you've heard the whole conversation and, and that's certainly not, I mean, the board, the, the committee at this point is looking at this, you know, at a little bit, I don't want to say higher level, and that's because that's not fair to say that, but, I mean, looking at potentially broader, more broad issues, right? Potentially more repetitive and pervasive issues that the community would be bringing forward to this committee and then to the full board, you know, to try to take action on. And, and so I, I, I don't think we were thinking about it in those terms, so.
Sure. And, you know, I think those deeper community levels need to be discussed with the community constantly involved and the issues of who is involved in that process don't necessarily need to be just individuals listed out. 10 individuals listed by the board who just have to keep participating. And only, only addressing it every three months, that doesn't seem like a viable solution to me for that, but appreciate the direction it's going. And I think there's a lot more evolution that can happen with the idea. So thank you so much for your work on it.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Gorman.
Rick, is there anyone else online? Sign up. All right. Thank you. All right. Let's move on into General Manager Staff Reports. I'll ask Randy to come up, give us our March 2023 financial report.
Good evening. First quarter 2023. Pretty uneventful quarter. It was pretty typical, needless to say. So that's things we like in accounting, things that are typical and very predictable. Just getting into the numbers on the page two, looking at the build units for the, for the year-to-date period for the first quarter. The units for electric on the electric side were up about approximately 1% for the quarter. Residential was down approximately one and commercial industrial were both up about 2%. Next slide, looking at the water side numbers and the build units that we build on the water side, we're up about 1.7% for the quarter. Residential was up 2%, commercial was up 3%, industrial was flat for the three months reported. Next slide, looking at the revenues for the month of March and March only. This is when we convert those units to dollars. For the month of March, we had approximately 2.2% higher revenues than we had in the prior year compared to 22. And we're about 2.4% higher than the budget that we projected in for the month of March when we published the budget in December. So all in all, it's pretty, pretty much in line with, with what we were expecting. Electric side, we were up 3%. Water side was down 1%. Combined, we were up 2% overall for the month of March. Next slide, on the revenues year-to-date for the three-month period. Likewise, for the quarter, year-to-date revenues were, were up 7.4% higher for the year compared to last year. We were 5.5% higher than the budget that we projected. Looking at each component, electric was up 6%, water was up 1%. You can see the notable changes there. Residential was up a little for 450,000 or 490,000. Commercial was 2.7 million. Industrial was 600,000. Schools were up 400,000 on the electric side and same similar trend on the water side for those same categories. Next slide, looking at the operating expenses for just the month of March for the single month comparing to last year. The O and M expenses for the month of March came in 24% higher, which was, was, you know, March notice that's directly related to the purchase power costs that we purchased through the, that month, period of March. They were considerably higher. Overall, for the budget, the O and M costs were approximately 5% higher combined. Electric was a little bit higher and our water costs were right in line with what we were projecting for the month. Next slide, this is a year-to-date quarter number. Comparing year-to-date, we're seeing, you know, a similar trend to what we're seeing our O and M side. Approximately 13% higher combined, maybe three-month periods. We were compared to last year and looking at our budget. We were, you know, pretty much right in line with what we rejected on the budget. We were half a percent down on the O and M side. So that was, that was a good note. Part of the reasons why our operating expenses are trending all the higher here is our recognition on our ERC deferral that we recognize in the first six months of every year is considerably higher in '23 than it is in '22. So that's had a, a big impact on that 13.3% number. Next slide. Taking out the depreciation, the non-cash items that we see on their O and M side. We're, we're seeing about a 13.3% increase year-to-date on the O and M expenses, less the depreciation. Our budget's about 1% lower than what we projected for the three-month period. Next slide, looking at our net position or net income for the month. For the month of March only, we were down 1 million combined in '23, March of '23, compared to 2.9 in '22 of March. Our budget is very in line with what we projected, off about $200,000 from three-quarters of a million down to almost a million from what we had budgeted for the month of March. The net position for a year-to-date, for the quarter, we saw a little little less net income, approximately $2 million than what we had last year at this time. We had 9.9 last year. This year, we're seeing 7.9. Combined, our budget was considerably higher in '23. Year-to-date, we had almost $8 million and we projected 2.9 or almost 3. So we had approximately difference of almost $5 million there. Next slide, this is a look at the spread between our revenues and our own operating and non-operating expenses for the month of March on the electric side. This is electric only. Revenues, we saw about 79.3, which is that blue line in '23, and we see about 73 in expenses. So that spread was about $6 million. It's, you know, we, we saw an anomaly in, in '20, in '21, and I think some of that was some Yuri, storm Yuri impact we saw in, in '21, I believe. So but we, we see that similar trend spread between those margins for the month of March, which is pretty typical. Looking at the water side, that spreads $1.4 million. We had 14.4 million dollars on the revenue side and approximately $11 million on the operating and non-operating expense side. Daily collections, next slide, it's trended about $1.6 million a day for the, for the period of March. That was very in line with what we've seen in the past couple of years. Next slide, we take those, those numbers and we just convert those, we, we add in the receipts and disbursements that we receive and that we gained $5.4 million for the month of March. So our cash position went up 5.4 million, which is, you know, a nice result. Considering March, a lot of this is based on usage that was done in the month of January, so. So the results roll over to this page. And our days cash on hand calculated out at 66 days. Last year, we were at 77 and we were up from 59 for the previous month, last month in February. Next slide. Just a graphical representation of that 66 days and where it's trending. I guess the one thing to take away from this, when I look at this, is I, I compare the marches when I go back of each one, and the trend is generally going down. So we're, our March of '23 is a little lower than the March of '22, which was a little lower than the March '21. So we're kind of trending downward on that scale. Another similar slide, just, just a little different way of looking at it. It's showing that, that $5.4 million from slide 14 and how it shows compared to all the other months. Some notable items on the balance sheet, a few inventories up compared to last year, approximately $4 million. And, you know, we still got a few dollars left in these, these two bond issues that were need to get spent and, and cleared out here soon. Capital spending side, we've got 89% of the remaining budget on the capital side. $6.6 million have been spent this year compared to seven, 2.722 last year. And as you can see, the, the projects we have listed there, the underground feeders, annual overhead, annual underground, some water system improvements and the Argentine tank has consisted of most of the dollars that have been spent. And the last page is, uh, our debt service coverage, our debt service coverage is up from '22 at about 2.83 times. When you add in the pilot, when you take the pilot out, our debt service coverage is at 2.1 times compared to, compared to last year was up from 1.65. So with that, that concludes the presentation. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to ask.
You mentioned about how we're trending down in days cash on hand. Could that be possibly due to inflation? I mean, I don't know what, you know, today and today, one day cash on hand was what, $750,000? Two years ago, what was, do you, was a day's cash on hand would have been?
I'd have to look.
500,000, so.
I think it was around 650 back then, Tom.
About 650, so.
Part of that is the O and M costs are higher.
Yeah, inflation and.
Yeah, so that has gone, gone into some of that calculation that impacts that, true. Yeah. This is, this is preliminary, so.
Preliminary, right, okay. Any questions, other questions from the board? Right. Thank you, Randy. Next, uh, it's kind of a new presentation that I don't know that we put in front of the board or not. But, you know, we're trying to introduce staff, introduce new new things that we are presenting. So Jason, Jeremy, do you want to come up? Jason, Jason McVeigh is Superintendent of our Fleet Maintenance Department. And he's done some historical look over all of our fleet. He's doing a good job in managing our fleet. We're trying, trying to look at how we project forward. Make sure that we maintain safe operating equipment and just kind of stay current as, as well as our finances will allow. So Jason, it's all yours.
Thank you. As Bill said, I'm Jason McVeigh. I'm the Fleet Superintendent. Been with the utility, working on 17 years, all in Fleet Maintenance Department. Next slide, slide please. Kind of an overview thing that I'll touch on today. Fleet maintenance team, fleet maintenance facilities, fleet types, unit types, maintenance practices and procedures, maintenance and fuel cost, fleet replacement procedure and grading system, future fleet outlook and fleet retirement and auction. Fleet Maintenance Team, I, me, I'm the Superintendent Lauren Jackson, the ship supervisor. We have two clerks, four working foremen, six garage mechanics, two service persons and a refuger. And now those 20 team members are spread over two different facilities and two shifts. Here's our service center, fleet facility. This is at the Electric Operations Campus. We have 14 service bays at this facility. We, we cover, we do work two shifts at this facility. And we service electric operations vehicles, energy control, water engineering, nearman power plant and nearman water treatment plant. The Monty Fleet Facility, it's located at the Water Operations Campus. The Monty Fleet Facility, it's located at the Water Operations Campus. We have six service bays here, we run two shifts here as well. And we service the water operations and administration building vehicles here. Our fleet inventory, currently we have three hundred and seventy active fleet, fleet units. On road, two hundred and seventy seven units, that's vehicles that are tagged in trailers. And we have ninety three off-road units and work equipment. BPU owns one hundred percent of the assets. There's, we also service numerous powered, powered tools such as chainsaws, water and hydraulic tools that the crews use. Our inventory has decreased by forty nine units since two thousand seventeen, and that's mainly due to just right sizing the fleet. Liquidating units that the utility no longer utilized or needed. Inventory consists of sedans, SUVs, light and medium duty trucks, heavy duty trucks, small to large off-road equipment and trailers. We have specialty trucks such as aerials, digger derricks, crane mounted trucks, vacuum trucks. And trucks with three in one power systems. Here's some examples of some of our fleet, like so we have sedans, SUVs, vans and light trucks. All sized accordingly to what, what the end users need. Some medium and heavy duty trucks, we have some. Underground cable spicer trucks, the larger truck on the bottom right is a water service truck, water crew truck. Dump trucks and delivery, delivery type trucks. Aerials and digger derricks, we've got the smaller bucket trucks used by the troublemen. And then the larger bucket trucks and digger derricks that are used by the, the lineman crews.
Make one small change over here, sorry about that.
No problem.
Can you lift your pressure?
There we go. Some other type of units that we have, we have a mobile fuel truck. We have a refuger in the fleet maintenance staff that goes to. Various campuses to fuel their vehicles in the evenings, water operations, electric operations, Nairman Power Plant and Nairman Water Treatment Plant. We've got some crane mounted trucks that are used both for the water operations, electric operations and, and there's even one at the power plant. And a large truck on the bottom is a vacuum truck that's used at Nairman Power Plant. We have lots of miscellaneous trailers, use the whole equipment and various material reels, power poles. The trailer at the bottom right, excuse me, is a hydro vacuum trailer that used for locating underground utilities. Some off-road and utility vehicles. The utility vehicles we bought, we've bought several new ones here in the last handful of years to replace full size pickups at the Nairman Power Plant. Or vehicles that don't necessarily need to leave the, the Nairman Power Plant grounds. These smaller vehicles are more cost effective and easier to maintain. We've got several forklifts, backhoes, excavators. The middle bottom unit there, that's a backyard machine used by the lineman crews to work in easements and backyards. And compact loader. Large equipment, we currently have three dozers in service used at the Nairman Power Plant to push the coal. We also have a switch in, switch engine there to move the cars around when, when needed. Our preventative maintenance program, all maintenance and repairs are done in-house, other than warranty work and accident repairs, body repairs. Units are brought in for service based on utilization of miles, mileage, engine hours and or a set amount of days. Annual and biannual inspections are performed, set on a monthly schedule for each unit. Oil changes are completed on a set amount of miles and or engine hours based on manufacturer maintenance recommendations. Inspection forms are completed, hours spent on maintenance and repairs and comments are entered in our TMT fleet software. Aerial inspections are performed annually by a certified vendor that meet our, our standards for inspections of all the, the aerial equipment. Fleet maintenance cost, maintenance cost and fuel cost is tracked by our TMT fleet software. TMT tracks hours spent on repairs, parts, service and overall cost. With that, we're able to track fuel usage, unit utilization, maintenance cost, repair cost and accident cost. Lifecycle cost is another measure we can use with the software and that's used to can, used in consideration for replacement criteria. Of, of units, repair cost, year to year vary due to utilization, average fleet, fleet lifecycle and weather. Between both shops, we average a little over three thousand repair orders annually. And that includes scheduled maintenance, repairs and accidents. Our fleet replacement program, replacement criteria is considerations that we use for replacing. Our fleet is age of the unit, mileage and hours, condition of the unit, unit lifecycle cost, utilization. If the units configured or sized correctly and business need. Fleet replacement program, this is what we would like to follow, but it's not always, not always, we can't always follow this, but we do our best. Heavy duty trucks, ten to twelve years, ten thousand or to twelve thousand hours. Most the diesel trucks and heavy duty trucks have PTOs, so we, we look at hours on those versus mileage because they are. Brand stationary so much. Heavy duty trucks with aerials, seven to ten years or ten thousand hours. Medium, medium duty trucks, eight to ten years, eight to ten thousand hours. Medium duty trucks with aerials, seven to ten years, eight thousand hours or a hundred and twenty thousand miles. And light duty vehicles, seven to ten years or one hundred and twenty to one hundred and fifty thousand miles. This graph is a cost per hour for heavy duty trucks. So the cost is on the left and then the, the annual, the years are at the bottom, but it kind of gives you a, a graph. This is an average of our fleet. Costs per hour over a period of time of its life cycle. You can see at four years is a little peak, but they, they stay pretty flat till about nine or ten years and they start going up considerably. Similar graph, but this is for light duty trucks, so this is cost per mile. Little peaks and valleys just based off of where they're at in their life cycle, you know, five years we have to do some maintenance. And then they're, they drop and then they peak again at eight years and about eleven years. Current fleet outlook, current on road fleet average is about ten years old. Ideal age would be five to six years old, that, that would give us a good balance of new vehicles, medium, mid, middle aged vehicles and, and older vehicles. As the slides before showed, maintenance cost goes up substantially after seven years of service. This graph here is just a, represents how many units we have for the age, the age there is on the left. So we have quite a few units in the four to eight year old range right now. New unit benefits, new fleet purchases are more reliable, safer and more efficient, more reliable with less downtime and maintenance cost. More fuel efficient, saving fuel cost and less emissions. Safer new equipment that better fit the utility needs. Some examples are the strobe lights, work lights, backup cameras and lower steps and grab handles. Future fleet outlook, continue to purchase units that are more cost effective, safe and fuel efficient. Spec units that are correctly sized for the job intended. Stay abreast of current and future models and industry standards. Electric vehicles and hybrids will fit the role of some future units. Keep renewable fueled units such as E eighty five capable units in our fleet portfolio. And keep fleet cost effective as possible with current market trends and options available. Fuel usage, our fuel usage has decreased over the past ten years. Fewer units, more efficient units, updated vehicle specs and no idle policy have helped decrease the amount of fuel used annually. Our current fuel types include diesel, unleaded and E eighty five. And the graph below is represents since two thousand thirteen to twenty twenty two. How many, that's, that represents gallons of fuel used for the fleet. And we're down a little over fifty thousand gallons over the past ten years. Retired fleet sales, retired fleet assets are listed and sold on the Purple Wave Auction Government Listing. It is a Kansas state contract, BPU receives a one hundred percent of the auction amount. Units are listed online and marketed by Purple Wave Auction. They have a nationwide viewership and we've sold units to buyers all over the country. BPU receives the entire auction amount and the buyer pays a percentage to Purple Wave. Auction results, in some cases, the auction process has increased unit sales by as much as four hundred percent. Over trading in units on new units that we was, which was, was our past practice. We've sold a hundred and fifty units since two thousand seventeen. Auction proceeds since two thousand seventeen is a little over seven hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. And the auction funds are applied back to the depreciation of the asset.
Jason, can I stop you for a second? Is that online or a live auction?
It's an online auction, yes.
And I remember when we went to Purple Wave, but I can't remember how long ago.
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
Yeah, that was the first year we used them. Guys have any questions or? Comments?
How many of those little ATVs do we have?
I believe we've bought, I think nine total.
And do they stay at the power plant?
Uh huh, yes, yes, yeah. We had several full sized trucks that were beat up and worn out, twenty years old, but they never left the power plant. So they have little, no miles on them, so. We started replacing those with these UTVs and the, the, the guys really like them and. They've been, they've been good units to us, they, maintenance is a lot less on them, they, they, obviously they're a lot smaller, they burn less fuel. And just bouncing around the power plant, they work out great.
Yeah, they would be.
Jason, have we added any all electric vehicles in our portfolio?
We, we have, we, we purchased one. Kind of early on, it wasn't a very good vehicle, it was. Broken down more so than it was actually used, we, we sold it in the auction. Probably about twenty eighteen or so. It was a Smith electric truck and, and they were built at KCI Airport and around there somewhere and they went out of business. It, it just wasn't, it was kind of too early in the game, I think, it, it wasn't reliable, they had all kinds of problems with it, so.
Do we have any plans to entertain adding any in the future?
Yes, as, as they come more available. Freightliner just released a, a new E M two chassis, which is, our chassis are M twos, they just. They're releasing them later, like fourth quarter this year, but they're going to be more for like the box truck, flatbed truck type application to start with. They hope to have in the next, by twenty twenty five, an E PTO. Option which would be more in our wheelhouse, I guess. Again, they're just, they're brand new and they're really expensive right now, they're, they're saying they're three to three and a half times more expensive than a conventional truck.
So we'll have to be very selective to it, I had this conversation with Jason on, on where we attempt to plug in. Electric vehicles and, and use them. Didn't mean to come out that way, but, but. You think about some of the bigger pieces of equipment that we, that we use run on diesel. Like our bucket trucks, you know, years ago, we, we took a look at. What was the early versions, all electric bucket trucks, the batteries didn't last in any time. So you get guys out, warm restoration, these trucks need to run around the clock at times. Because they're in full restoration mode and. Can't stop and go plug, charge, plug, plug in and or set amount of hours to, to fully recharge and then go back out. Longer they're charging, the longer our customers are out of power, so. I mean, there's places, there's places where we can, we can potentially use this, it's just. Let the technology increase, let the battery technology increase and. When you get into some of these PTO operations and stuff like that, they can really drain batteries quickly with the, with guys setting up and operating them. Maybe lighter trucks, lighter cars and stuff, it may be where we adopt that type of, of, you know, EV products early, earlier than. Looking at someone a heavier piece of equipment.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's in my mind, I'm visioning, it would be the sedans, you know, it would be replacing sedan, you know, engineers. That have to drive to work sites and things like that where they're not, yeah, I can't, I can't imagine that a, a all electric PTO. Drive would last long enough to be a work vehicle, I mean, it'd be very limited. The drain on it, but I could just see, you know, starting thinking about the light vehicles, so.
Yes, of course. And they're, they're a pretty small market size right now and the demand for them is really high. So even, even purchasing them, it for, can be a struggle, you know, you ordered something and it's years out. Before they can fulfill those orders. Some of the new hybrid or not hybrid, some of the new all electric pickups, they're not really geared for our. Our segment really either because they're all crew cab trucks, four wheel drive, short beds, you know, they're more geared towards a. Guy running back and forth to restore or something versus our configuration is more standard cab trucks, long beds for, for work. So, but it will get there eventually, I think, it's just going to take them some time.
If there's a market.
Yes, yeah, yeah, you're right.
You know, drove to Wichita the other day, came back, stopped right outside of, on this side of Topeka and. I was surprised how many charging stations are right there at that Phillips sixty six, just on this side. So, I mean, it shows you that, that Kansas and other states are starting to build out charging stations along major interstates. And so, and then we've certainly have heard where Ford and GM is, is headed in terms of how they're switching their production and. We'll have to. Continue to watch that and, and. And having conversations about making sure that our Fairfax plant is also included in building electric vehicles in the future. So we certainly don't want to see that go by the wayside. But it, it'll be upon us quicker than, than we think, so just have to continue to prepare for it. Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
A few other comments on the miscellaneous. I know Rose had already talked to me about this, Rose, and if you were going to mention it, I'm sorry for stealing your thunder. But I went over to a meeting, a meet economic development meeting with the. With the UG today, the mayor, the two at large commissioners and why not economic development, the chamber was there, there were some others. And. The city's going through a citywide master plan. Kind of taking all of their separate plans and doing a citywide plan and having some. Kind of taking all of their separate plans and doing a citywide plan and having some conversations, so there's an update up. There's a meeting coming up on the sixteenth out of, out of the lake at the JP Davis Hall that I'm not sure how many people know about it, but anyway, they're going to be start, starting to talk about, you know, pulling those master plans together. So it wa, it was a long list of, obviously it's about a two-hour meeting. But in that meeting, Commissioner Bynum had reminded me that the pilot reduction special meeting is going to be scheduled at the UG on May twenty-fifth at five o'clock on the field floor. And I know Rose is on that committee, on that task force, along with a couple of other people, but so she had asked if I would come over and ask for Lori to come over and I, I told her we'd be there, so. So I don't, I'm just, I guess there'll be some information I'll be releasing, Angie, I guess I'm looking at you, so it'll probably go out at some point in the near, in the near future. I'm sorry. Okay.
And then it will also be I'm sorry, it will come from the clerk and it's also when you look at the Unified Government website and the front, very first page, they have meetings, but that's not the entire set of meetings, so you have to go to the clerk's page, Unified Government's clerk's page to get all the meetings that have been set.
Good. So there, there were, there was also conversation, I know the UG is looking at potentially how would they manage all the other charges that are on our bills and whether they separate that, you know, how do they manage it, you know, so Rose, I'm not sure if that's going to be part of the meeting or not, but she did share that with me, so. Moving on, I did ask and I think, thank you all for your emails, but I did tell them that we may be looking at a joint meeting between this board and the commissioners in July. Seemed like that seemed to work with most of the board members here and I only had two commissioners there, so. But the mayor was here, so I did say July, he said, well, if we, if it's going to be July, we could do July, so. All I need to know is just which one better, I think if either day works, I'll, I'll just ask them to pick one of the two July meeting dates and then whatever they decide on, since it's a bigger body, then I'll just come back and let you guys know. Working with county administrator on, on our joint quarterly meeting as well, and he just said, send him the information and then we'll get that started back up as well, so. Hopefully, hopefully I hear back so soon on that and then I'll be able to in the past, the board president, vice president along with me and staff and two at-large commissioners, the mayor and UG staff all met during those quarterly meetings. So I'll try to get that on a regular schedule if possible. Last thing, I know we're, we're being right in the middle of our hearings during the summer, but I don't know that AWWA is going to be a possibility, APPA may be a possibility, depending on scheduling. If you want to go. And I'm bringing it up here because I think the hotels are going to fill up very quickly, so you can let Chris know, then we can at least get you a room and always cancel the room if, if there's interference with any of us being able to make it, but at least get the rooms booked. That's all I have, Madam President. Turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you also for stealing my thunder about the pilot task force meeting. We'll go to comments tonight, Mr. Groneman.
I have no comment.
Thank you. Mr. Haley.
I have no comment.
Thank you. Mr. Mylan.
I want to comment. Mr. Taiwan always leave at the wrong time, but he's always throwing out organization that needs money and so forth, but you need to do a little research before you open his mouth sometime, but I guess I don't want to tell him that. But I have a question here that NBRs for the last twenty-five years, they get thirteen thousand dollars a year for this program. Now, NBRs, based on the instructions, this, they receive funds from the UG government. In addition, they're supposed to have their own fundraising to help out their communities. So keep in mind that there are some funds out there that people are part of. Secondly, on this board, it says, our job is to provide pure water and reliable power to our customers. That's our job, folks. Everything else is a community redeveloped, support the community. We have three levels of income. Residential, commercial, industry. That money is recycled. It don't go no place. Except for OEM cars, they have that OEM car. Everything else is recycled. Very simple. In addition to that, I'm on my way to the hospital tomorrow, if I'm not back here. That's number three, two, one, twelve, twenty-one. You don't see me here, might be down there.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. We're certainly offering prayers for, for your hospital visit. I guess I'm up, so a couple of things. One, I would like to ask for approval from the board to attend the APPA annual meeting this year.
This is Jeff move to approve.
This is Tom, I second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, board. So we had some discussion earlier in our committee meeting, in our community engagement committee meeting. And one thing I want to prepare the board for, our goal at this point is to have a framework for how this is going to work with our community ambassadors and in the form of a resolution available for review by the full board at the work session for the meeting on May seventeenth. If that slips at all, we'll let the board know, but, but that is our goal at this point. And we're going to work, I'm going to work closely with Angela to, to get that done, so. More to come on that, but, but that's what we've been working toward and, and hopefully we'll, we'll get that accomplished and, and at least roll roll this community engagement committee framework out to the board for its approval, so we can move forward with next steps. Mr. Haley.
Thank you, I did listen in to the comments that Madam President during the, the, the meeting that was held and I just wanted to see if there'll be some action taken next time. I, I'll be at a graduation, we'll be participating by Zoom on that day, I just want to make sure that we will get, there was some discussion as to whether or not the resolution may be forwarded prior to our being there. I know there was discussion with Ms. Lawson as to whether or not we can see what we'll be voting on prior to.
Yes, it can be sent out there, just once that goes out, there can be no conversation back or amongst the members regarding that.
Good, I'd appreciate being able to review it prior to because I'll be participating remotely at that time.
Okay, sure, thank you. What else did I have? Oh, Jason, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Where are you at? There you are. That, that was, you, you have a lot of responsibility and it looks like that you're, you're using a real logical approach to watching costs over there, which ultimately helps everybody in our community, so thank you for what you do over there. I believe that is all I have this evening. Mr. Bryant?
Randy, thanks for the update. I know that it was only preliminary, but still, I like to see the numbers as often as possible. Jason, it was nice to meet you and thank you for the presentation tonight.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
I just also wanted to thank Jason for his fleet management presentation. I'm sometimes amazed at everything that goes into running one vehicle that I'm in charge of, so it's hard for me to imagine how you managed all of these, but some of them look like pretty fun rides, actually. Randy, thank you as well, and to my colleagues, Jeff and Rose, thanks for really working hard on this community involvement and putting it together. It's, I feel like it's been slow-moving, but I'm looking at the finish line. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley. Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.